All right, looks like we have everyone that's gonna be here. It's on the Zoom call. I would like to call to order the Village of Cottage Grove Board, uh, Village Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is Monday, August 3rd. It's about 6:31 on my watch. And we are holding this due to the COVID-19 pandemic as a Zoom meeting. It is being recorded, all chats, all discussions that occur on the Zoom are recorded and captured. Uh, and for those that choose to, they can do that through the link on the agenda, as well as there's an audio feature too, you can call a number for those that just would like to listen in. So with that, we'll start with roll call. And Lisa, would you do the honors?
Certainly. Alan?
Present.
Lindberg? Murphy?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Vandervelde?
Here.
Williams?
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Uh, the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So find the flag. There's one behind Lisa. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. Uh, and I will pause for anybody on the Zoom or audio. And, uh, please state your name and your address so we can capture that, uh, in the All right, uh, we'll then move on to item five is discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular village board meeting, which was held on July 20th. Uh, any comments or edits or motion to approve?
I would, um, note and ask that at 10 CI regarding village committee nominations, um, to just include that Ratcliffe indicated that the application should be completed by all nominees for committee appointments. So I would make a motion to approve with that, um, included.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sarah. All right, any further discussion? Having heard none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Oh. Sarah, comment?
Uh, i- if I can ask a quick question, I guess, I, I don't recall that we made a motion and decided that we needed people to fill out the, the, um, application. Um, is that something that, that we actually did do? I, I guess to make sure.
No, it wasn't as part of the motion for that just during our discussion, that that's what I had indicated.
Okay, all right, so you're just adding the verbiage, but we, we, we aren't requiring people to do that, do so, but correct?
That was not part of the motion last time. So do we need to make this?
So do we just make, did we just make a motion to approve meeting minutes? Or we make a motion to approve meeting minutes with that line in the, in it, I guess then? I'm a bit confused now.
Yes, my motion was to approve the minutes with that line included at 10-1C. But it did not, putting that line in did not include that as a motion for that item in the minutes. I just wanted it to be noted that that's what was discussed or what I had indicated at that time.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Do me that.
All right, uh, anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Moving then on to item six, uh, is presentation to the board. Uh, we have a few this evening, so, um, it looks like Jill Schmidt, uh, on the ride is, I believe I saw her on the Zoom. Jill, are you, you?
Yep, I'm here now.
Okay, super. So, uh, feel.
Okay, all right, I'm going to share my screen just because there's a lot of information and I want to make sure that everyone gets it. Um, and there's also some visuals just with some maps, so bear with me for a second here while I share that hopefully. Um, while I'm doing that, um, so just a little bit of background on the ride. Uh, the ride has actually been going on for five years now. This will be our fifth year. We started in 2016. Um, it's a charity fundraising biking, biking event for UW Madison. So we raised money for cancer research and treatment at UW. And, um, sorry, just one second here while I try to hopefully get on this. Um, here we go. Does everyone see my screen now for the presentation?
Yes, Jill.
Okay, perfect. So, um, again, this is the fifth year of the event, um, cancer fundraiser for UW. Uh, we normally have five courses, uh, listed here, uh, and those also include rest stops that include food, water, and aid about every 15 miles. Um, in the past, uh, we have actually passed through Cottage Grove. We normally go the Vilas Road route and then we use Bakken Park for a rest stop. So you may have actually seen us come through in the past. Um, we are always the fourth Sunday in September, so this year we'd be on September 27th of 2020. Um, but with this year and everything that's happening with COVID, we've had to change our event, um, and that's why Sean, um, asked to have me on this call today. So thank you for that because there are some changes that I want to make sure that the board is okay with and that residents are aware, um, of this coming September. So our participation is greatly decreased this year just due to COVID-19, um, and obvious reasons of we're no longer having our large celebration. So we're expecting around only about 300 to 350 total bikers. Uh, at this point, we have 250 registered and we only have about a month of registration left. Um, impacting our event and also the courses, we have no central start-finish location. This is for, um, reasons related to COVID. Um, same thing of we did not want any mass gatherings. We want to spread people out as much as possible so that there are maybe one to two bikers at a time, and those would be family units, um, who are obviously all together anyway. Um, we also have no mass start this year. So to also spread people out, uh, we have told riders that they can be out on course from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And this is also when we would support them. So with any of our staff will be out there, if they want to write, ride outside of those hours, they absolutely can, um, but we will not support them. Um, and they will also just be on their own and they may do other courses and that. We've also dropped down one of our courses. We didn't feel like the 5K course or three mile course that usually had a lot of children on it, um, and just really more of your inexperienced bikers. So we, um, got rid of that because that's normally on a closed course. So we only have our four courses this year. Um, and also with our rest stops, while we still are offering aid to people, especially our 100 miler and 100K riders, um, we have cut that down though to, normally we would have a whole group of volunteers out there, sometimes 20 volunteers, obviously a lot of riders coming, they'd have a ton of food and beverage options. Um, but this year we would only have one to two volunteers and those volunteers will be internal staff. So we have, our volunteer coordinator is actually, uh, an employee at UW Health in our radiation oncology clinic. So she is getting employees from within, um, our own department because they are aware of all safety protocols with PPE, um, with physical distancing because they've been living that, um, since March in the hospital. So those would be the only people actually at the rest stops and they're only there to essentially make sure that, uh, bottled water and prepackaged food like granola bars, um, you know, prepackaged cookies, things like that, um, are replenished. And then also that people are adhering to physical distancing, uh, rules. We are telling riders that if they come upon a rest stop and they see someone there to wait until that person has left and then they can approach, um, the table and the tent. And the biggest impact this year for Cottage Grove and your residents is that we have a different route than in past years. So again, we normally would go on Vilas Road, uh, hit Bakken Park for the rest stop and then be out of town. But this year, um, this is our route and it's a very, um, kind of zoomed inversion. So all of the routes except the 25K will be heading from Nora Road, take a right onto Uphoff, then hit West Ridge. And then this is, um, to go back, Nora Road, we would in the past take left and go to Vilas where this year we're taking a right. Uh, and this also gets in Cottage Grove and Wheelbridge Road will be affected the most. And so why that's happening is we didn't have that, um, start-finish again that we had in the past out on the east side of Madison. And so we lost a lot of mileage on our routes and we had to make that up somewhere. Um, and this is the one place that all of our routes, um, were able to do that. So, um, that would be the impact for the residents on Wheelbridge mostly. And also of course at that North Main Street at that stop, uh, and to make sure that riders are stopping and then going through. And then for our 25K route, the difference is this year is that, um, again, people can start from anywhere. So this is not a start and finish for everyone to do. They, if they live in Cottage Grove, they can start on the route from their house if they want. Um, this would start at Fireman's, it'd basically just be a turnaround for people, um, so that Hi, everyone, I'm back. So, um, sorry about that. So just going back here for a second, um, and hopefully everyone's getting that. Um, so this is the route that the 25K would take. And again, we have about 50 riders on that right now, not a ton. So, um, I'm just going to keep talking at you because unfortunately I have unstable internet, so sorry about that. So, um, that would also fall along Wheelbridge. So essentially they're going the opposite direction of the rest of the routes. But again, that Wheelbridge Road would be the most impacted. And so, um, the difference is this year would be for the residents, um, that they would see most of the riders between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. I say that because, um, further down Nora Road, we will have a photographer and that will be the only place that will have a photographer. So we figure that most people will want to get their picture taken. So, um, those would be kind of our, um, hours that we're seeing the most riders. There would be increased bike traffic along Clark Street, Fireman's Park, um, since again for the 25K, that's the start and then turnaround. Um, and also, um, in the past, our riders haven't hit Cottage Grove until around 11:00 AM, whereas this year since we, uh, say that they can start at eight, residents may see riders, um, start at 11:00 AM versus that, uh, 11, or 8:00 AM versus 11:00. And then also, um, in talking with Sean and the police, um, we also discussed using, um, community park for our rest stops since we're no longer going along Bakken Park and it's also under construction even though that might be ahead of schedule. Um, and what that would be is a 10 by 10 tent, no staking, it's just a pop-up tent with, um, a table and chair, uh, for our, uh, rest stop volunteer to hand out food. And then, um, I've also worked with Deer Grove EMS to contract with them. Um, they did feel that our numbers were big enough that they did want some increased presence out there just for any safety precautions. So, um, talked with them and we've worked with them in the past, but, um, I don't know how that affects, um, you know, any residents in your area if they would give a call. So, um, that's kind of the gist of what's happening this year and, you know, again, any impact on your residents. So I don't know if you normally open up for questions or how you do this, but, um, feel free to, uh, whether you have questions now or Sean also has my information, I'm happy to answer anything to make sure that this is the least impact on, um, your roads and your residents that possible this September.
Well, first of all, Jill, thank you for, you know, coming and presenting this evening. And, uh, it is a great event for a great cause. So I will turn over to board members if they have any questions on the route or the, nature of the changes that you outlined, uh, and so we'll go with that. Anybody have any questions from the board for Jill?
Uh, this is Heidi. I was just wondering, uh, is it a rain or shine event or is there a rain day?
It's a rain or shine. We do say though, um, and this actually happened to us last year, um, we actually had to cancel last year because of, uh, a torrential downpour the day of. So it will be a rain or shine, but with that being said, if it is a, if it is inclement weather, we will send a message out to all riders to essentially either go at your own risk or choose a different date. Um, we do have a virtual option that riders can ride any route they want, um, from September 27th to October 11th. So we would actually, in the case of weather, ask them to just go and ride a different day in, somewhere in those two weeks.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Uh, is there a Facebook page that we can follow for your event?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, on all social media, we're TheRideUW and that will be Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And that's not only where we post obviously updates now, but especially the day of too, um, because we know a lot of emails go to spam. So that would be any changes the day of as well.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a plan for signage for either residents or the bikers? Or a plan to communicate with the folks that live, um, on the main pieces of the route just so that they're aware and can be extra cautious?
Absolutely. So, um, I was working with, um, Kim Banigan, um, to give out, uh, residential letters to all residents anywhere in, um, I don't know if it's like the township or any resident on any road that we use. Um, so they should have all gotten letters. Um, I know she said that they were going to get an email communication about that or some kind of digital posting. Um, we'll also have directional signs for the riders so they know what way they're going. And if there should be any additional signage either that day or even a few days prior, just alerting the residents, um, for, you know, caution bikers, we can definitely put those out as well since we have those, um, when, for other places on the route as well. So, um, yeah, we do have letters going out to them and we'll have directional signage for the riders. But again, if, um, having, you know, any kind of yard signs or what have you for residents, um, that day of, we can definitely produce those and put those out as well.
Um, so Kim Banigan's with the town. Are you also going to be sending stuff to village residents?
Uh, yes, I absolutely can. How, what is your mechanism for doing that? Is it letters or? Okay, sorry, I also should say caveat of, um, we normally worked with, um, race day events to do some of our permitting last year. So now that this has changed to I'm Taking It Over. So, um, I can also always ask them, um, what they did in the past for, um, getting a hold of village residents.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted you to be aware that they were separate is the main thing.
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, so Jill, probably the best is to get that information over to, to Lisa, our clerk.
Okay, perfect.
And we certainly can put it on our Facebook as well. And Sean's got your information, so, and the route and everything, so he can provide that information back to Lisa in addition. So we'll make sure that at least on our social media, we're communicating that out for the residents that take a peek at village social media, whether it's the parks or our village site or whatever. Um, again, the more communication about something like this, the better. Uh, we might certainly make sure everybody's safe on the day of. Um, and people go, don't ask questions like what's going on with all these silly riders running around there? They're actually doing, uh, riding around for charity as well as getting in shape too. So, um, I think that would be the, the best route to go. And as, as Melissa said, that Kim's in the town, so she'll certainly cover all those town roads that are, that are impacted. So, um, certainly Community Park and Wheelbridge, as you've mentioned, will be the, the big ones for the village and, um, that can be communicated certainly through our, our vehicles.
Okay, perfect. And along with that, um, when I contact Lisa, I will have my cell phone on there. Uh, that's the best way to contact me now. And also I'll be out on course on the day of too, if anyone would have questions or, um, concerned about that. So I'll give myself a number as well.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Jill? All right. Thanks again, Jill.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. You do not have to stick around, um, but you're certainly welcome to.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Uh, next presentation will be from Bill Schultz for the Miracle Field. Uh, I saw Bill on earlier. Bill, do you want to, uh, I don't know if you're going to present anything or just provide an update on where things are at. Um, I know things are progressing and, uh, shelter and everything else, and we're doing some infrastructure things to help get ready for Miracle.
Yeah. If you go out, if you go out to Bakken Park right now, you'd wonder what's going on because behind the park where our field's going to be, uh, there's nothing that you can see by the, by eye. But what we've been doing is we've been doing a lot of the base work. Uh, we, uh, are working with a civil engineering firm by the name of Snyder and Associates. Turns out we ran into them at a function we ran and it turns out that they have, uh, done engineering work for six Miracle League fields in Iowa. And so, uh, that was really beneficial. Uh, they've been working on issues out at the field with respect to drainage, grading, uh, doing all the construction drawings. And, uh, we had to make some adjustments, but the construction drawings are all done. And so we then were able to send out the drawings to, uh, initially, uh, excavators for the excavating, grading. And we're also putting a concrete base down which will, um, be underneath the rubberized field surface that we would install, uh, for, for the field. So right now we are at, pretty much close to, um, accepting bids from a couple of contractors for that kind of work, including the electrical. So, um, it looks like nothing's happening, but it really has. We've, we've had some, um, some hiccups, but the biggest hiccup of course is COVID-19 with respect to, um, the fundraising. And, um, what we've done is we were going to get, our hope was to get everything done this fall and have our league start in end of May of 2021. But with COVID-19 fundraising efforts really kind of came to a halt. Um, and it wasn't appropriate for us to really start pushing fundraising events during that time. So, uh, things are beginning to loosen up a little bit with respect to people wanting to talk about our story. But what we're going to do is we want to get the earthwork done before the fall, the excavating, the grading, the pouring of the concrete. So that in the early spring, phase two would be installing the rubberized field base, which will take only about a week. We have contractors for that already lined up that have done probably 150 Miracle League fields around the country. And, uh, parallel to that, we'll have a fundraising, fundraising for also, uh, the bleachers, um, the walk-in dugouts, uh, and the scoreboard. We were going to include lighting in, in the, uh, but I think we're going to hold off on that initially, um, because, uh, the finances are going to be kind of tight. So the one thing that I'm really encouraged about is that, um, we've had so many people come forward who want to volunteer as far as working with the kids. Uh, and we've talked to two or three high school coaches and they're so excited about having their players come out. And, uh, if you recall, what these volunteers do is they are on, on the side of each one of these kids as they maneuver and navigate around the field, helping them hit, run, throw, field and score a run. And, uh, so they are very excited about that. But the other exciting thing is that the YMCA of Dane County is, uh, very, very interested in making the Miracle League a program of the Y. And what makes that kind of nice is that, uh, their push right now in a lot of the Y's is adaptive sports. And they just hired on, at the East Side Y, a lady who, uh, is specializes in adaptive sports activities. And that's important because once you get those kids out there, you need to know how to deal with them, how to work with them. Uh, and so the training that she will provide and the direction, as well as, again, they will, uh, provide us with a lot of volunteers also. So I think that's, uh, that's great. Monetarily, we're at $210,000 of a $500,000 goal. The goal has gone up because the costs have gone up, uh, particularly in the earthwork, unfortunately. It probably won't be 500, but we, we're making it that. And, uh, so, um, we've got a ways to go, but I think during the fall and winter, hopefully we'd be able to have some fundraising events. Uh, just about every day I'm talking to private individuals, writing grants, um, getting feedback from them. Unfortunately, the last three or four grant proposals we sent into foundations, uh, we were finalists for, but, uh, they diverted the funds and I understand why, to COVID-19 and now recently the racial and racial injust, racial injustice causes. So we were kind of caught with, um, not being able to get funds from some of those foundations. Uh, but they remain quite interested in helping us, but that probably is going to happen down the road. Participant wise, we've been talking to the Down Syndrome Society in Madison and was in down Dane County, uh, Autism Society, uh, people at the Weisman Center. Uh, I think we're going to get a very nice participant level in the first year. We haven't publicized or pushed a lot for getting kids signed up. It's way too early. We want to do it when things are in place. We know especially confidently what our timetable is. What we think will happen now is that in the spring, we will insta, given the funds, we will install the bleachers, the walk-in dugouts, the scoreboard and any additional fencing, which won't take that much time. But instead of late May, we might start in late June. Uh, but we'll still be able to get a good, a good season in. So we're continuing to look for sponsors, um, donations. We're looking for someone who might like to have, uh, their name on the field, naming rights. Um, and so we just, uh, are, are doing everything we can. But I think I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to have a league next year, but it's take, just taking a lot more time than we thought. So I'll ask, I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, uh, thank you, Bill, again. Uh, we're excited for, for this to happen and, um, obviously we're, we're hoping that the funding comes in sooner rather than later. And glad to see that at least some, you know, the base work is getting done, which again, as you said, is, is not seen, but that is certainly key for this facility. Uh, any questions from board members? Or comments?
Just want to say thank you, Bill, for your dedication to this work. I know it's been hard, harder than you anticipated probably with the fundraising. So thank you for your commitment.
It's going to happen. The one thing I'm encouraged about too is we're getting more and more residents of Cottage Grove involved because I think that's very, very important. I think it's going to be a great community program and, uh, I'm encouraged by that.
Um, this is Heidi. Uh, when, Bill, when you presented to the Parks Committee a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned, uh, some kind of groundbreaking and, um, you know, if we have a picture, even if it's just, uh, you and a few people socially distanced with a shovel, um, you know, then we can use that to get awareness out to networks. So, um, make sure to, I'm sure you've worked with Sean on that and, um, we can figure out how to get that, um, on our social media also.
Yeah, definitely. We have a couple of ideas. Plus, we're, we're also, um, one of the ladies, ladies on my board is, uh, works for an architectural firm, and they're going to do some renderings of the field to show people what it's going to look like. And, um, we have a, a large information tent that we have. And we're hoping that at that event, we will have the renderings and the various phases so that people can see exactly what we need to do. So that they get a better idea. Yeah, a picture is worth a thousand words. And right now, uh, the picture right now is a flat piece of land. So anyway, but definitely we're going to have, uh, we're going to have some kind of grand groundbreaking ceremony.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? All right. Again, thanks, Bill, for your time and, uh, continue pushing on as you will, and we know you will. And, you know, certainly the board's behind you.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate it very much.
Right. Uh, then moving on, we have a presentation by Dolphin Swim Academy. Uh, that has been in the form of a letter, I believe, um, from Tony, and I'm probably going to butcher his last name, Hozinski. And I think Tony's actually on, uh, the board does have this, uh, information. Gives some parameters of, of what the Dolphin Academy is actually, uh, trying to, trying to accomplish there in the commercial park. But, uh, I don't know if Tony wants to say anything or if you're just on to listen in.
Yeah, yeah. I hope you guys can hear me. I apologize. I'm kind of on a Northwoods vacation here, so I'm, I'm pretty sure the video is not going to work, but can everyone hear me okay?
Uh, we can hear fine.
Perfect. Yeah. As you said, I'm Tony Hozinski. I'm with Badger Realty Team, and I represent Brittany Ballweg, who's also, uh, available on the call here in her company Dolphin Swim Academy. Um, and we're here about the potential purchase of a commercial lot in the business park, um, for her swim school. And, uh, I know you guys probably plan to discuss, um, an offer we've made maybe later in closed session, but, um, Brittany and I wanted to make ourselves available to kind of explain, um, Brittany's business and really to answer any questions you may have about, um, you know, her potentially coming into the business park. And with that, if Brittany, if you're available, if you'd like to maybe just, uh, tell the board a little bit about yourself and your, and your business, and feel free, um, everyone to, to jump in if you have any questions, uh, regarding this, and one of us will hopefully be able to answer.
Hi, I'm Brittany Ballweg, owner of Dolphin Swim Academy. I don't know if you guys can see me. The screen looks a little different right now here.
Uh, we can, Brittany.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, so I am Brittany Ballweg, the owner of Dolphin Swim Academy. And we have been in business for the last three years. We have leased a location and unfortunately temporarily closed due to COVID-19. Um, the facility is an assisted living, and it's just, it's not safe to bring additional traffic into the building. Um, so we're expediting our goals and plans to build a facility. Um, we do some lessons starting as young as six months, and we go all the way up to adults. Uh, I've, we have a twenty foot by thirty foot pool right now, taught an eighty-five year old how to snorkel. It was great. We made it work. Um, but we're just looking to build and enhance our services for the surrounding communities. Um, Cottage Grove is one of our top choices due to the current, uh, distance from where we are. And there's not a lot of offerings over here for, uh, swim lessons that promote water safety and an intense program. We have over three hundred and seventy-five kids currently enrolled right now. We've partnered with Kid Safari and Burning Ladders daycare centers in the community. And we offer some lessons for them during the morning, which helps kind of break up their days and, you know, gives parents a little more freedom at night to hang out with their kids. Our biggest thing is water safety. With COVID-19 drowning rates have unfortunately gone up as more access to backyard pools and just the busy life that we all have had. Um, so looking at getting our facility up and running would be great. We do have COVID precautions in our building plans to promote one-way traffic and safe social distancing and still be able to teach the importance of water safety in a fun and inviting way for children. Um, we have put in an offer for lot fourteen in the commerce park and just grateful for your consideration. And I'm here to answer any questions the board has about us or the business. That we can go from there.
All right. Any questions for Brittany or Tony from the board?
This is Sarah. Um, can you tell me a little bit if you plan to open the pool up for any hours to the public? For like an open swim or parties, or can you talk about, talk to me a little bit about that aspect?
Yes. So our current lease, we're only structured with the hours that we have for lessons. So our goal is to offer open sometimes. You don't have to be a member to come swim with us and enjoy our birthday parties. Um, we do plan to have a birthday party. It's a pool party is always a good hit. Um, and then we have, you know, we've read Life Guards, we've provided CP. And just with open sometimes, it's a great bonding and a great way for swimmers to practice everything that they've been learning. So we do want community hours, especially our pool is going to be slightly designed so there'll be twenty-five yard lap lane. So even adults are going to be able to comfortably swim and get their fitness in as well.
Thank you. And then one other question, you said you have three hundred and seventy-five kids enrolled. Did I write that down correctly?
Yes, and we are at capacity of that number, so we need room to grow. Our pool only can hold two teachers at a time right now. So ideally, we'd love to have a larger facility so we can accommodate more growth. Um, I unfortunately have, well, fortunately, I have a very long waitlist of families who want to get in and get into lessons. Um, so we are looking to grow and make some room for them.
All right. Other questions?
This is Heidi. Um, Brittany, I was wondering about any senior type things. Uh, you mentioned open swim hours, but like, um, other programming, like some kind of aquatic fitness courses or something like that?
Yes, I would love to be able to offer water aerobics. It's great to get seniors in. Our pool will also be at a depth that will allow for like water walking or water jogging. Um, we, I have also worked with aquatic therapists, um, so maybe bringing in some rehab availability for, you know, older residents as water is a great, great benefit for them.
Thank you.
Brittany, hi, this is Paul Vanderbilt, um, and Tony, hello. Uh, thank you for your excitement around this and your presentation. Uh, one thing that I mentioned at the last board meeting, uh, when this was initially discussed, and maybe this will be part of the closed session conversation with Kyle Adams from Ruda Bush, was to be able to see, uh, five-year pro forma to, uh, as a business plan to show some form of sustainability. Um, and one thing I didn't mention at the last meeting, it also would be good to see, it sounds like the Dolphins organization is around the communities and, and you need to expand. And so it would also be good if we, uh, would have the ability to see maybe, uh, the last five years of either if you're on a fiscal year or calendar year, uh, your P and Ls, uh, for a five-year period along with a balance sheet. And I would just suggest that, you know, for us as a community, um, that would be something that I would see as, you know, just due diligence on our end to potentially see this thing through.
Yeah, I'm definitely willing to talk about that and share with that on a closed session and talk about our performance. We have been in business for three years. Um, I started out with twelve summers my first week. The next week I had fifty. And I grew exponentially from there. And now we're at full size capacity. So looking to grow, to continue to grow and accept families.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for, for either Tony or Brittany? All right. Well, uh, again, uh, certainly appreciate the, the information background that that's been provided as well as the presentation and, uh, Brittany, your time, uh, in front of the board. Um, so with that, I think we can move on. There's no other questions?
You all very much. Sorry. Thank you all for your time.
Yeah. Uh, uh, otherwise we'll move on to unfinished business. Which is item seven. Um, that is discuss the Village Board, uh, list of priorities. Um, Matt has included a memo in the packet for us. And we're just continuing on to check through, uh, some of those priorities and discuss those. So Matt, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thanks, Sean. Um, the next two up for discussion is the number three ranked priority, which is sustainable, sustainability and climate change. And then the number four was Village Library. Um, so we're going through the same exercise of, I was going back and looking through staff goals and objectives that were identified during the, um, twenty nineteen performance reviews, so into, into twenty twenty. And I, I listed those out there. Um, and then, you know, the board can have a discussion on if there's other things that you guys want to discuss staff taking, taking on in the short term or long term, or just, um, potentially things to consider during budget time.
Okay.
Questions or, um, or I guess we can just turn it over to board discussion.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, any questions or comments from the Village Board? Regarding these two items, priorities?
Matt, this is Sarah. Um, I just noticed the, um, under, oops, I keep opening the wrong screen up. Um, under the, one of the, right, one of the lists here for sustainability is, uh, rain barrel classes and rain gardens. And I know some communities will actually sell rain barrels at a discounted rate, um, to try to introduce that. Is that somewhere in any of the plans or discussion?
Um, I'm, I don't think that has come up yet, but JJ, um, do you have any thoughts on that, or has that come up in any of your public works groups?
Um, we've seen examples of it in other communities, but they, that would be probably an expenditure we'd want to add to a, a, a budget line during budget talks to actually, um, to, to run a program like that. We've been, we had big plans this year, but with, uh, the inability to meet in person, the rain barrel one kind of got pushed back just to talk to folks about how they could make their own. But absolutely, yeah, with, I mean, a little bit of funding, be great to be able to offer something ready-made for folks.
Yeah, definitely. And then also not sure if this maybe could be lumped in there also, but, um, similar concept to composting? For either a classes on how to do it and or, uh, you know, being able to provide the actual compost bin to, at a reduced price or any price. So just adding that.
These are excellent things that we can talk about at our Sustainability Committee meeting also. Some good ideas. Um, I think we talked about the solar, um, panels for, um, at the MSB and last meeting after our report on the Sustainability Committee. Uh, so I think we're moving forward with gathering information on, you know, what that would cost for budget time too. So that's also not really on here, but, uh, something else we're doing too.
Yes, and Heidi, that's been talked about in utilities as well as public work. So, um, I think the information gathering is the, the cost to replace a section of, or the roof on a missed building. Um, and that information is being collected now so that we have that as we begin the, the budget discussion to see if that's something we can work on. The, the solar panels themselves, I think everybody knows and has heard, they, they end up paying for themselves over less than a ten-year period. Uh, it's the question of how much does that roof replacement cost, uh, for that? Any other comments on these two priorities or questions?
I do, I do have one other just quick question. Can you just, um, help me understand what is, um, wastewater utilities mutual aid? But how does that work or what is kind of that? Let's just scoop on that.
Uh, let me see if I'm reading it right here. That's the, yeah. It's essentially just like a, 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 a public works mutual aid agreement. It's a, a group throughout the state of water wastewater utilities that essentially agree to help each other out in an emergency.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Otherwise we'll continue on with the next couple of, uh, priorities, uh, at our next meeting. And, uh, that should queue us up very nicely for, uh, the budgets discussions that'll happen to follow after that. All right. Then, uh, moving on to item seven B, discuss and consider the creation of an equity exclusivity and race, uh, committee. The, Sarah was kind enough to put together some, a background on this as well as potential objectives for this, uh, ad hoc committee. So Sarah, do you want to take it away?
Sure. You know, I guess I, I wrote that memo because we had talked about it a number of different meetings, but it seems like we needed something a little more formal to react to. So I put that out there for that. Um, I would, I would like to refer to it as the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Um, and so, uh, DEI is the acronym for that. Um, so that is one, one piece of that that I put in there. Otherwise you can see the memo. We come up with a joint resolution back in June, so this is following up on the commitments we made when we all unanimously voted on that. Um, you can see the objectives would be to give feedback to Village on practices, policies, procedures, objectives as it's related to diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, identify ways to encourage officials, citizen appointees, staff and community members to learn about diversity, equity and inclusion. Promote the engagement of all the voices of the community. And identify initiatives for how the village can work towards demonstrating and reflecting these values within our community. Um, there's a proposed committee composition there. Um, and I think one group that I, um, might have missed was village staff member or members. So I would like to add that as a, um, role on the, on the committee for the committee composition. Any questions or thoughts?
Um, I, I think this is a great memo and really lays out what we had talked about, so I really appreciate that, Sarah. Um, one thing for the objectives, could we also add working with a company or a person that has knowledge on, uh, DEI practices so that we don't misstep? And, um, are actually advancing diversity, equity and inclusion as opposed to, um, just people on the committee that might not like know the right, um, way to go forward.
I, I think we can put that in. I just, I'm, I'm sure it would come with a cost, a financial cost. And so I don't know if that needs to be handled um, separate later, or, you know, if this committee would need to come with a budget, which I know some other committees, you know, don't have necessarily. So I agree that we should put So I agree that we should put it in there. Just don't know the logistics of how to do that.
Okay.
Uh, at, at least with other committees, the, they've provided feedback during budget time as far as if they do need lots of considerations to do X, Y's and Z as far as part of their committee initiative, and that's funneled in through the board. So I would kind of see that as, you know, one of the first steps for this committee is if, if they choose to do, you know, bring out, bring in outside counsel as far as someone who's an expert or an organization, and there's a cost associated with that, then, um, then that would be part of that kind of submittal to, to the board for consideration. And I'm sure it varies widely, you know, you could have somebody that simply volunteers. It's, it's an expert to, you know, an organization that does it for, um, to, to sustain their, you know, their organization. So I'm sure it's a wide variety of, of scenarios that could be considered. But that's, that's again typically how we've done it. And I think that would be appropriate. Uh, I don't know if others have an opinion on that for the board?
I mean, I think that at the committee, we, um, the committee could talk about that being, um, an option and then finding the right place or fit or, um, and recommend to the board like other committees do, like we recommend we go forward with this. But I, I mean, I think that that is definitely something that this committee should consider doing.
Okay.
So my concern is that we, um, like with budget coming up, this committee won't really get going before we get our budget kind of drafted and ready to go. So, um, maybe staff could do a little research on just the general idea of what it might cost so that we can earmark it, um, in preparation for this committee.
Yeah. The other thing, Melissa, is the board could just decide that, um, that up to X, uh, thousand or whatever would be allocated for this committee for consideration of bringing that, that expertise in. As far as, but if, if there's not enough time to do that. And certainly staff can, can also look into, um, reaching out to other communities and figure out what they've done, because there are committees like this out there as we kind of step forward. So we should be able to have something in the, in the budget discussion for this, I think, whether the committee is, is formed fully or, or not.
Great.
And it is a priority for, uh, on our priorities. So I think the, the board in general probably would consider that certainly. All right. This is a, if there's no other questions or comments, I think again, the memo outlines it very nicely. As Sarah noted, just the change in, in the name. Is there a motion then to create?
And, and adding village staff as a bullet point under committee members. Yep, those two things.
That's in addition to the police officer?
Yeah, I think so. Um, what do you, I, I've looked to your thoughts too. What do you, if you agree?
Sure.
I want it to be as inclusive. No pun intended.
Yeah, we'll certainly put it out there, see, see, um, who would be interested. We are, we are creating, we are creating a lot of new committees that involve staff time. Like the next one we're talking about, Erin and I will be on the, um, the housing task force meeting. So just trying to, we don't have a, we don't have a ton of staff to, um, to go around. So, but I'm sure there'll be someone that will want to step up.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to create the ad hoc diversity, equity and inclusion committee with the proposed committee composition and objectives as noted in Sarah's memo and including a village staff member in the committee composition.
Oh, second.
All right. Motion second then by Melissa and Paul. Uh, is there any further discussion? All right. And having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. As Matt alluded to, then item C is discuss and consider the creation of the housing task force committee. There is a memo in the packet on this as well that Erin put together for us. Erin, if you want to kind of talk through your thoughts on this?
Sure. Obviously we had talked about this a bit earlier in the year as we were getting to the point of sending letters out to invite people to join is when the virus hit. And I think we thought, well, let's wait a few months until this all blows over and then start it in person. But obviously that's not the way it's playing out and housing is still an issue. So we need to get this going. So I think one motion tonight would be just to reconfirm that we're wanting to launch the committee and giving John the authority to send those invitation letters out. Then the other part of the staff report, um, is to provide that new committee with some objectives and a mission statement that you guys all approve of. I took a shot at drafting some of those up here in the staff report, but I'm certainly open to any suggestions anyone has. Um, as far as the objectives, um, I have four of them. The first one, to understand the housing inventory and demographics, both in the village and in the Dane County region currently and as trends over time. So kind of looking at everything in context. Uh, two, identify areas of housing need, again, both within the village and in the Dane County region. Use, use available population and household projections to anticipate needs over time. Third, to consider locations proposed for various types of housing and review the housing chapter within the current comprehensive plan. And four, to identify opportunities to encourage housing development that address the needs of the village of Cottage Grove, which may include recommendations to amend plans, ordinances or procedures to better address those identified needs. And then the draft mission statement is the mission of the village of Cottage Grove housing task force is to ensure that the village's vision of a safe, friendly and attractive community is widely attainable regardless of income, race, ability, age and household composition.
Questions for Erin or just discussion in general?
This is Heidi. I kind of remember a long time ago when we were all sitting together in person debating, um, whether we wanted a housing developer on. And I see it's on the list, but with a question mark and.
Yeah. I'm not sure we really resolved.
Right.
Issue officially. So that's another topic.
I mean, I could see, um, maybe we don't need to figure this out right at this moment, but I can see a benefit of understanding different perspectives of housing and challenges that are presented. So, um, I think that, that perspective could be valued on the committee. So I guess that's my two cents on that.
When Erin and I were discussing, um, discussing this, we felt that, um, if we're going to recommend to have a broker on the committee, that it made sense to also have a developer. But we, but we wanted to put a question mark there because we, we knew that, I think, I think it was one board member that brought it up during the, the last discussion. Because I think it was initially proposed to be in and, um, he made a comment to remove it and I don't know that that was resolved like Erin said. So we were just kind of bringing it back up.
I, I also agree that, um, we should have that perspective. Um, I think it's important to understand what they're seeing so that we can understand development better and it'd be better for the village then. So I think it's good to keep it on.
All right. Other items or areas of discussion? We, I know we've talked about this a while and again, as Erin said, COVID has kind of sidelined this, but we do, we do need to really get going on it. And I think there's definitely some passion, uh, within, within the board to, you know, even beyond this, uh, be, be on the committee. Sorry, excuse me. So that portion is, and, and we just need to kind of agree that yes, we're in, this is their path forward. And this is where the committee can certainly start. And, um, and obviously they can adjust the mission, the, the goals and everything else as they, as they gather and, and share their expertise. And, and move forward there. And then I think that we, we had said that, you know, the, the overall goal was to kind of provide within a certain period, maybe a year or so, uh, with the board, some, uh, various recommendations. As far as a path forward for the, for the village, whether it's adjusting the comprehensive plan, adjusting potentially zoning, uh, to accommodate that or, or any other things that they, they see would be appropriate to address this, uh, this need.
Just one quick question of clarification. Is it a safe assumption that the, um, like large business, small business, real estate broker are within the village of, you know, businesses within the village of Cottage Grove or real estate broker that sells a lot of homes in Cottage Grove? They're specific to the village or are they, or are they broader that could be outside of the village?
I guess certainly people who have a stake in the business. So, um, businesses that are local or brokers, if they're not residents, that at least are active, you know, in the community.
Okay. Maybe, it may be good just to call it out in the, in the list that they be village, you know, businesses within the village or, um, just so we can make sure we're focused while we're thinking, brainstorming of who to invite.
And another point too about housing developer, when, I don't, I don't know if that, if the feeling is, someone necessarily that's a developer of single family housing or multifamily, or maybe it's one of each. That's just some, just another point of discussion that it doesn't have to necessarily be one or the other. Could be both.
Can we leave that flexibility in the language that it could be one, either or both or?
I would think so, just from the sense that, uh, we don't, we don't know if, if all of these parties are just kind of a suggested composition. We don't know how many or who is all going to agree to be part of the committee. So, um, ultimately this is gonna come as a recommended appointment from John to the board. And then the board can kind of consider that at that time.
I wonder if it's already kind of built in for some flexibility in that last line under the, um, proposed committee that there could be multiple members from any category. So I wonder if that kind of builds that flexibility in there that instead of needing to delineate it further specifically for housing developer. It, and for my mind, it allows us that flexibility, but happy to put more, you know, adjust more in.
I think that's a good point, Sarah.
Do we want to, as far as a Realtor or a Realtor firm, do we want to, I don't want to phrase it back ourselves into a corner that there may be someone from outside our community that has a much more vast experience with this. Would we want to eliminate an individual like that from being able to be on the committee?
Yeah, I don't want, I, I would agree Troy. I don't know that we need to, we would need to specifically eliminate anybody from, but you're right. People have expertise outside the village.
That's a great point Troy. And, um, John and Erin and I, when we've met on this, talked about that too. Because a committee like this, that's going to be kind of a working committee that's going to be developing these recommendations and maybe even, um, a document or study that's going to be presented to the board. Ultimately, you're looking for the, the right fit with expertise. So certainly if we, if the board's okay with that, we would, we'd be looking a little bit more broad, but certainly, certainly also looking for, um, people that are familiar with Cottage Grove.
I'm sure we'll have experts that we invite to come in and talk to the committee too. So even if they don't want to be a full-on member for the whole duration, they can at least come in and share what they know.
Yeah. And a good example of that would be the, um, a professor from UW or something like that.
Any other questions, comments regarding the potential creation of a, um, housing committee?
Um, this is Heidi. I'll make a motion to create the ad hoc task, uh, housing task force and authorize President Williams to invite members and provide a proposed membership list for us to approve using the composition proposed above with the discussion points we've made.
Very sad.
Matt's laughing at my motion.
I'll second. This is Sarah.
I can't see. Oh yeah, Lisa's over there. She might be laughing at my motion too.
I'm sure she captured it.
I guess I'm laughing too, so.
Oh, that's good. All right. We have a motion of second then to create a housing task force committee, an ad hoc housing task force committee. Uh, is there any further discussion? Having heard none, none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right. Uh, then moving on to new business. First is discuss and consider a sound amplification permit for August 16th in Fireman's Park. For the view movie. Uh, and there's some.
Don't interrupt, John. There was a second part of that as well, just to, whoops. Discussing, consider the objectives and the mission statement. Wasn't in, but it was broken into in the staff report.
Oh, it wasn't broken on the agenda that way. Sorry, Erin. Um, I made the assumption that based on the discussion, that, that was part and parcel with the motion.
That's the intent and that's, that's.
Okay. And we have a second motion then regarding that. So we'll back up to unfinished business since Erin corrected me. To, uh, at least as the, the, the initial guide for the committee is the memo that Erin's put together with, uh, the edit of the housing developer, potentially both, uh, single and multi, multifamily or diverse. As far as the type of housing that a particular developer does. I think that was the main item that was, that was changed from the memo. It says, get rid of that question mark.
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, objectives and mission statement noted in the memo.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Is there a second?
Second.
Sarah, uh, motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks, Erin. Uh, let's see. Then, uh, moving on again, new business. As I said, uh, sound amplification for, uh, some cool movies in Fireman's Park on, uh, August 16th. There is a memo, uh, in the packet, some information from Sean. Sean, I don't know if you want to talk about this?
Yeah, just briefly, as John mentioned, I did provide a memo. We're looking for something community-based to do. Uh, our music in the Grove events continue to be canceled due to social distancing regulations. And we kind of came, stumbled across this idea. And we had a, uh, about five very generous sponsors that are, are donating towards the event. So we're gonna hopefully run it, um, a couple of times on Sunday, August 16th. And just give the community something that they can, that they can, uh, something that they can do. Uh, we will encourage, obviously, uh, this is a kind of a drive-in base type of a, a situation. So we will ask that people remain in their cars and, and except for just to use the, the. So we will ask that people remain in their cars and, and except for just to use the, the restrooms. So, uh, it will be broadcast over the radio as well. So there will be a radio, um, station, whatever we can find, eighty-eight point three, something like that. But, um, if it should turn out to be a hot day, folks maybe want to have their windows open. So we just want to be able to, uh, broadcast that. Everything we should be done and out of there by six thirty on, uh, that Sunday evening.
All right. Any questions, uh, comments for Sean?
I'll make a motion to approve sound application permit for August 16th, twenty twenty at Fireman's Park.
I'll second.
All right. Uh, motion by Troy, second by Paul. Uh, any further discussion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Right. Uh, very exciting actually. Thank you, Sean. And all those involved in that, especially the sponsors too as well. Um, item eight B is discuss and consider moving our, uh, September seventh Village Board meeting for trustees to, um, the eighth of September. So obviously September seventh is, uh, Labor Day, uh, and we are continuing to have full, uh, agendas. So the thought was, talking with, with, uh, Matt, as we shift today and we still have our two, um, board meetings in September. As we, um, that, that start, it's the time of, um, budgets and other things that are going on. So it's probably good to, to, for us to meet, but, um, would like the board to certainly weigh in on this. Matt, anything to add?
Um, no, I don't. Uh, I, I would be open to, um, any of the nights that week outside of, uh, the ninth is planned commission. But that's from, from my standpoint, but we're just looking to gauge the board as to what works best for everyone.
Mrs. Heidi, would it be beneficial to wait until after planned commission to have a meeting? Will that be, or will we have plenty of items to address if it's before planned commission?
I think we'll have, it's hard to say, but, um, this meeting's before planned. So we've, we've been, we've been having pretty full agendas and that, that's kind of the main reason, I think, years past, for the most part, when a meeting has landed on a holiday, we've just, for the most part, have skipped it. But just kind of being sensitive to not end up with, you know, too heavy of an agenda later in the month.
I support it. I don't have any issues with that. Moving into the Tuesday.
Likewise.
So do we make a motion? I can make a motion to move the September seventh Village Board of Trustees meeting to September eighth at six thirty PM.
I'll second. Uh, I think Paul beat everybody at the punch there, but, uh, it was close. Um, so any further discussion on moving that meeting to, uh, the eighth?
And, and I'll, I can circle back with John if, when it gets closer, if we truly do not have agenda items that necessitate a meeting. If you want, I don't know if it's worth making a friendly amendment in that motion to allow John and I to make that, make that call to cancel if there's truly nothing to discuss.
Okay. Can we amend the motion to allow for the meeting to be canceled? If it's determined there are no pressing agenda items? Is that, is that a better motion than my last one?
It was perfect.
It sounded good, so I'll second it again.
All right. So we have, uh, just an amended motion. Um, yeah, I, I would agree with Matt. If, if there's nothing, if we have a shorter list and we can, and we can put it, move it out, uh, to that second meeting, then we'll certainly do, we'll do so. But, um, we'll, and we'll play that by, by ear when it comes closer to that time. So we have a, uh, first, second motion on the floor. Any further discussion on moving that meeting? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, item C then is discuss and consider a board letter, uh, to committee and commission members. There was a, a draft in, uh, the packet, uh, regarding a number of the committee meeting, uh, committees. All, all, albeit not all of them. Um, and so.
I think the intent is to send it to all of them, all of the committees.
I put it, I put it together. I realized that it wasn't, um, clear who did it. So sorry about that. I should have had a little memo to go along with it. Um, um, I drafted this, um, based on our priorities. And I thought it would be good that, um, the members on our committees and commissions also knew what the board was working on and what our priorities are. And so that's what this letter is designed to do.
Okay. Uh, any questions, uh, really regarding that? So, uh, then this makes a lot more sense, Melissa, as far as the reduced list, uh, of committees. So I appreciate that content. Any questions from, from board members or comments?
Mrs. Heidi, I was, um, thinking about this as I read it. And, uh, as we head into budget season, I think it might help, uh, the committees understand what we might be, um, prioritizing during budget season. So I think it, it would be useful for that.
Are there comments or questions?
So I would ask that it, um, be approved and then sent to all committee and commission members. I wonder if it would be helpful to have it as an agenda item on each committee? Or if it should just be sent to, like, members by email?
Uh, certainly if it's an agenda item, Melissa, to that point, uh, if members on those committees have questions or whatever, or comments or, or clarifications, then that gives them an opportunity to do, do so. Um, as well as it's then in the packet and recorded and everything, um, for the, certainly the public to see if they haven't had a chance to listen to some of our meetings.
That's true.
So I, I think that, that's just, I think that would be fine. I don't see any issue with it. And you're only saying the, the committees on, uh, this particular list, or are you saying all committees?
Uh, I think all committees, even if it, because the, the things that we are working on really impacts the village as a whole, not specific committees. Such as economic development and, um, housing and fiscal responsibility and diversity, equity, inclusion and sustainability.
But I, and to that point, I think, uh, someone, uh, on a committee that maybe doesn't meet that often or whatever may say, hey, wait a minute, I got a great idea. Uh, related to these priorities, and I'm going to speak up on that, and maybe related to their particular committee, or maybe something they want to, to bubble up, uh, to another committee. So I think that's, I think that's a, a great idea.
Would that include joint committees as well?
Yeah, I was thinking that. Probably not, cause the, um, cause the joint committees are trustees. Um, and, um, other supervisors. So that probably wouldn't have to be on those committees then. But what are your thoughts on that, Troy?
I, I guess I, I don't have any thoughts. I'm just asking the question because I'm not sure that any of the joint committee, committees would be necessarily, uh, involved with any of those types of things. I think of joint fire, um, as, as an example. Uh, I'm not sure how any of those, how that committee would negatively or positively affect any of those.
Right. Yeah, I agree with, yep, I agree with you. That's a good point.
All right. Is there, uh, then a motion?
One other just quick thought. If we want, if we want the organization, or the, the committees to put it on their agenda, um, we probably would need to, um, highlight that, at least in our communication to the chairs of those committees. Cause those are the ones that can put things on to their own agendas, right?
And staff members, can't they?
Yes and yes. So I think we just come, just to discuss, um, this particular memo and, and, and just make it, uh, a standard throughout all the committees except for joint. Probably was best and just add it to the new business section of each of those committees. So that they have an opportunity to, to, the members get to review it and then, uh, certainly discuss it at their, uh, future committee meetings or commissions.
This is Heidi. So, um, I'm chair of ordinance review and we don't have a staff member on that committee. And we haven't been meeting during COVID nineteen. Would it be our intention to have that committee meet so we can discuss this if we weren't planning on meeting already? Or just on our next meeting, we would add it to an agenda? I mean, we could call a meeting and then discuss this, but if we don't have any other topics, then I'm not sure. I mean.
Uh, well, you're probably gonna, I think most committees will come back together here soon if they have any, um, type of budget considerations, uh, that they needed to sort through. So ordinance needs to look at the budget for the codification, uh, you know, where we're at for this year and, and whether they think that there's going to be more or less, uh, ordinances that are going to get reviewed and updated, for instance. And at that point, as long as you got other items, uh, for the committee to meet, then I think that's appropriate. Just to meet on this, I think you just wait till, uh, that future meeting. But I, I think a lot of the committee meetings that haven't been meeting will probably have to get back together in the next month or, or probably in the next month, just to cover any items that they have for consideration on the, on the budget. Any other discussion on this particular item or is there a motion?
I move to have the, um, this memo to our board committees put onto their upcoming agenda for discussion and comment, and also be sent to each of the committee and commission members. That sounds. Okay.
Sounds, uh, sounds okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion second then. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Then moving on to, um, reports from village boards, commissions and committees. The first one is the library planning commission, excuse me, committee. And they have a couple of them to go through. So Melissa, uh, sorry, I missed you on the last, uh, committee meeting or agenda. So we've got two of them to, to, to talk about today.
Well, basically at both of them, we just worked on the survey and getting it down to ten questions. Um, we're still working on an intro to the survey. It will be by Survey Monkey, cause we, then we can track the IP addresses. Um, and we're hoping to bring it to the next board meeting, um, for, um, approval to be sent out between September fifteenth and October fifteenth to be on the, um, village Facebook and website and all sorts of other places. But, um, it will be coming forth, um, in the near future to the village board. And also, um, our next meeting is this Wednesday.
Thank you, Melissa. All right. Uh, any questions? Then moving on to peer court steering committee, uh, there's the agenda in there. Uh, Jeff is excused this evening, so, um, I didn't get anything from him. I don't know if Matt or Erin, you heard anything otherwise, uh, regarding peer court?
I have not.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Uh, so we will then move on to, uh, joint fire department committee. And there are a couple discussing considers. So I don't know who wants to jump in there for joint fire, but I'll turn it over to those trustees.
All right. Thanks, John. Um, so we met the rapid response vehicle. Um, it's being worked on and hopefully the, um, chassis will be done soon. And then they can put it together, but everything's still backed up because of COVID. Um, we discussed the two percent fire dues, um, which I'll discuss a little bit. But then, uh, engine three, future replacement, that engine is from nineteen ninety-six. And it's had some issues, um, that have caused it to be off the road for, uh, a few weeks to a couple of months while they get it repaired. Um, so the, um, also when we have it in our budget for twenty twenty-two to replace, by then the, um, fire chief was, um, told that it would probably be, the cost for it would probably go up forty to eighty thousand. Although we don't, we didn't have the quotes in front of us. So he's going to be getting, um, quotes for us to look at next meeting to get a better understanding of how much it will cost. Um, and we can think about if we want to up the date of it. But otherwise, um, maybe we look at the contract in twenty twenty-one to finalize the purchase in twen- at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. But, so that's coming up. Um, we approved, uh, getting wifi in the meeting room and the bay, um, which can be reimbursed with, uh, uh, CARES Act funding. Because it's important for them to have access to virtual meetings now. Um, the furnace blower on the second floor wasn't working, so that was approved. Um, the washer and dryer, um, need, are like fifteen years old. And since they've been doing a lot more washing of their clothes before they go home, um, they, those needed to be replaced, which can also be reimbursed with, um, CARES Act funding as well. Um, and then the PFAS foam disposal and replacement. I'll come back to fire departments. Um, and so, okay. So for the first item, the discuss and consider authorizing the village attorney to draft a revised joint fire district agreement. When we looked at the fire agreements last year, they, there's like twenty of them. Some aren't in place anymore, cause it was like building the, um, the EMS station. But a lot of them are piecemeal and things in the agreements, we don't necessarily do anymore. Such as the village was supposed to be in charge of the, um, the fire department funds and now the town is. So I thought it would be beneficial to have our attorneys look at the fire agreements and see if they can, um, make it more clear, clarify certain things and maybe actually reflect what's being done currently. In that, um, also I'm hoping that it would, um, that discuss the two percent fire dues. That needs to be, um, um, better, better line item or more clear in our budget too, as to where those go. We get those from the state and they have to be used on certain things. Um, and, um, right now it's not necessarily clear, um, where they're going. Because it's the way the town has it and the way that the village pays is, um, needs to be more clear. Um, so does anybody have any questions about that?
So the goal is to basically have one current contract?
Right.
Great.
And the, the reason why it's on our agenda is that it would be village attorneys that would be looking into it rather than shared with the town. And it is the villages here this year, um, to be chair of the committee.
Any questions, uh, from Melissa regarding that item?
Oh, in addition, I, with the fire agreements, maybe we can have a little bit more clarity on. Oh, in addition, I, with the fire agreements, maybe we can have a little bit more clarity on the exact roles of the Fire Chief. With that is the fire inspections and enhanced repeaters. Some of our new development has been, like the, the larger concrete buildings. The fire department inspects them and they find their radios don't work. And so they recommend that the developer or builder get an enhanced repeater for the building. And those are extremely expensive and an, um, a, a cost that they weren't anticipating. And the, it, it's not really clear between what I'm hearing from the Fire Chief and others, whether that is something that can be required of the developer or not. And so I'd just like a little bit more clarity in the fire agreements as to that type of thing. What exactly the Fire Chief and department have control of or have the ability to require of developments? The, the police radios work fine in the development. So I'm not really sure whether it's our fire department's equipment. The Fire Chief didn't think it was. He thought it was more of the Dane Con system that we have in place, the 911 system. But yeah, so, so a little bit more clarity there would be part of looking into the fire agreements and making them more concise.
Melissa and Matt could maybe interject a little bit. Matt, I don't know if that's why you switched your mute off. If I put you on the spot, just say so and that's okay too.
What do you want me to interject on?
Well, I, I thought, I, I saw you, your mute come off and I just wanted to recognize you because I know you were, you're familiar with some of this.
Yeah, and it's just, again, you know, to Melissa's point, when it came to the repeater aspect of it, it, it just happened to come up in, in conversations with different developers. And these are, as Melissa stated, are very expensive units. The one that we know of for sure is that Chief Labor did look into putting a repeater into the Piggly Wiggly that we were going to possibly fund through village funds. And that repeater, just for that building, was going to be a $50,000 investment. So they're not cheap. And to put that onto a developer, or excuse me, a developer after everything's been planned and then halfway through building or three quarters of the way through building saying, oh, hey, by the way, this may be something that you include in your building. You know, we thought if that's something that the village border, that the village wanted to have for our new developers, that it happens on the front end when they're dealing with Aaron and Matt and they're doing all the processes for the planning process to have that know upfront that this is a requirement that the village is going to come up with in the future. The only downside of that is we do have a joint fire department. So it, it would be hard for the village to mandate it, but then the township not mandate it. And we don't want to discourage development inside of the village just because one municipality requires it and one doesn't. When it comes to the radio aspect of it, a lot of our issues inside of the village were taken care of when we did our radio upgrade two years ago. When we get invited into all these new developments, that's the, one of the main things that Chief and I do is bring our radios inside of these buildings to make sure that we are going to be able to communicate and find any dead spots. So we can let the officers know right away just for safety aspect of it. So again, you know, just long story short that, you know, if the village does want to have these systems in place, that's fine. But it, it needs to happen on the, we're, doesn't need to. We're recommending that it happen on the front end of the planning process instead of when these developers are already in the process of developing their buildings. And then just doing the research for Melissa, in Dane County itself, there's only one municipality that does have an ordinance in place or that does mandate these systems. And that's the City of Madison, just due to their, their infrastructure and their tall buildings and the amount of buildings that they're, they're dealing with that is part of their planning process. Chief Labor asked me to do a little bit of research and I reached out to other fire departments that are sa, same size or equal size to us village-wise. And there's no one right now that's, that is mandating it by ordinance to have these repeaters in. It is a suggestion if it does come up in conversation, but it's not something that's mandated.
Right. And so tonight, though, we aren't asking for anything about the enhanced repeaters. It's, I think it's important that we fully understand the role of the Fire Chief before we can proceed with any of that.
Yeah. And some further context, Cottage Grove Commons, I, I believe it costs them $80,000 to put it in. And their impression was it was a requirement put on them by the fire department. But then, I correct if I'm wrong, Melissa, but they were telling the Joint Fire Committee that it was just a recommendation. Well, at, at a minimum, it's got to be clear because that's just, that's too much to put on someone if it's, if it's just a recommendation. And certainly if that's something that the fire department wants to put toward development, like Matt was saying, that should be a discussion with the board.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Both Mads.
It also sounds like it, I mean, would all these other municipalities not have, you know, have the same issue? It might be worth looking into equipment issue and maybe that's part of the contract too. Like how we would share costs and equipment upgrades. I don't know.
The fire department has submitted a grant along with other departments in our area, like Marshall, I think, and Deer Field Fire Department and other ones to upgrade the radio equipment. Like it's like an $800,000 grant they're looking at getting. But we don't know if they'll get that or not, but we're hopeful.
All right. Um, I think this is a discussing consider. Again, as Melissa kind of laid out, there's multiple agreements that are out there and some of them don't even apply anymore. So that's kind of the birth, first thrust of this particular discussion and consider. And then probably some sort of, at, at minimum, at least reporting when there is interaction with a business and any type of recommendations or, or consideration for them. The board should be aware of that too, because we're looking at, you know, potential developments all along. And it'd be, it would be good for us to know that information. And it's also then clearer to whoever they're dealing with, this is a recommendation, not a requirement if it's spelled out in black and white. So is there a motion then?
I move to authorize the village attorney to draft a revised Joint Fire District Agreement.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second then to update this agreement. Again, clearing up a lot of old, old stuff into one new agreement. Is there further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. So the next one, I think.
Yes. Yes. Thanks, John. So then the PFAS removal costs seven, up to $7,700. It's so that the, this company can come in and take out the PFAS foam from our fire engines and dispose of it properly. The, the quote is up to $7,700. It's kind of a range. And it was, the other one that we had was over $10,000 for that company to come in. And unfortunately though, in $7,700, it wasn't something that was budgeted for last year. So the fire department does not have the funds to do this. There is talk of possibly clean sweep, the state coming in and doing the PFAS removal. But I think they, that was talked about back in January. But with COVID-19, things have kind of slowed down there. And so the Fire Chief isn't sure when, if at all, there, there will be a clean sweep. But it's likely if there is, that there could be reimbursements for those communities that have already done that. So they'll keep their eye out for those possibilities. But in the meantime, the fire trucks are, have this contaminated material that they can't use. Because if they do use the PFAS and they have to report it and it's this whole thing. So they've just been using water. And they, along with the PFAS removal, then there is like a $2,600 cost that the fire department can absorb to replace the foam, the PFAS foam with non-PFAS foam. So then our fire equipment will be able to work again, work more up to standards. So the amount would be, the, the villages portion would be roughly 4465 based on the equalized value. And I'm not sure because of the contracts, whether this, the town thought that this was an expense that was based on a portionment of what we pay in, in, in our budget. So around 58%. So I'm not sure if it would be the 58% or if it is 5050, because I don't know the particulars in the contract. But I would say up to 4465 for the villages portion.
All right. Any questions for Melissa or the committee members?
Do we have a place in the budget from the villages' perspective to take this out of?
No. Just being honest, the, I mean, the, our, our budget's in decent shape. We'll be, I'll be sending you guys the financial reports later this week for the second quarter. You know, the only, the only area of our budget that is, that is going to be a struggle are the legal expenses. But, you know, everyone's been well aware of that. But pretty, pretty much everywhere else in the budget is coming in at or around hitting their line items. So there's, there's not really an expected area that we have a significant amount that could go towards an unbudgeted expense. So. If, if we did go at or over budget, then this amount would come out of reserves. But as you heard from the auditors at the last meeting, our reserves are in a good position. So not, not something we want to dip into all the time. But a dollar amount like this shouldn't affect us too much.
Matt, you just clarified the question that I asked that evening of them. Were there any particular line item, budget line items that they were able to save against budget that could be reallocated, you know, to this cost? And wasn't necessarily able to get that answer that night, but you just answered that.
And, and for the committee members, if, obviously foam is needed in certain situations. I'm thinking probably electric or something of that nature. So without this, it, it does hamper the, the fire department or no? I mean, and Melissa, you said that they've been just using water like any, any other department has. But is this another tool in their, their kit that they, they really could use as they get into, you know, certain situations? And, and are we going to let five grand, you know, prevent us from, from doing something about it? Even if we had to go to reserves? I, I'm just throwing out a question to the, to the board.
Right. The, using just water takes longer too. So that could result in more damage or loss of life, even depending on the extent of the fire. Fortunately, there hasn't been any, any of those types of situations. But I, not, not that that would prevent them from using the PFAS at that point. But do we want to put ourselves in a situation where we're contaminating our environment then? When we could have resolved this before?
To me, you know, it's seemed that, you know, it's a safety and risk potentially hazard material that, you know, I would be hopeful that we could absorb the 5,000 somewhere to address it.
Well, it's only 4465, tops.
All right. Is there a, a motion then from committee members or further discussion on this? Otherwise, I'd make the motion to to cover this expense to remove the PFAS so that this, their equipment can be reloaded with the appropriate non-PFAS material for up to 40, let's say it's up to 5,000. Case the, the rounding is off a little bit, so we don't have to come back on this. And we use it out of reserves at this point. This is a, a one-time risk avoidance to prevent, you know, you know, a fire person from having to decide at that moment, oh, I'm not supposed to use this. I'd rather not have them have that decision overhead and then the follow-on that, even if they have to use it, which is, certainly would want them to, because it's probably a critical situation. Then we're going to deal with a lot more costs associated with cleaning this stuff up.
Exactly.
Second.
All right. We have a second from Troy. Any further discussion?
Just one additional point, John, that it won't, it won't directly come out of reserves to start. So that'll, that'll be more so end of the year. If we end up going over budget in total. Because there's always, there's certainly always a, a chance, certainly by the last quarter. Always direct staff to not make purchases, purchases unless it's absolutely needed. So we, we do come in at close or under budget. So.
Yeah. Understood, Matt.
That would be the same expectation.
Okay. Yeah. And, and we've had situations like in a particular year, we've, we've used, you know, way less salt, for instance. And that can, and that, that can add up fairly quickly. And we have had years that are a lot worse, but other parts of the budget than give.
Our bill costs, for instance, are, are way down. So that may, that may be an area too. So.
Okay. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Melissa. Moving on then to Law Enforcement Committee. Just real, very, fairly light meeting as far as the agenda. We went over the use of force, database review. This is a database that our department has access to due to our involvement in a study out of University of Washington, I believe, if I remember correctly. Not only us, but several other agencies in the Dane County also participated. So we get that information for learning related to that. And certainly Chief Labor can go into more detail because I'm not doing this justice. But essentially Chief can, can utilize that, utilize that data information to make, you know, educated decisions, adjustments and things of that nature related to, to use of force overall. Cottage Grove has done very well in this area and hasn't had to do that. Very limited use of force, pulling, grabbing, I think is our, our main one related to that. When, when, you know, just a discussion is not, not working with a particular suspect. Then we, we discussed a, a speed limit change for the area around Bachan Park and Bielsa Road there. So that would be as you just enter the village, right as you begin to see the soccer field on the far end of Bachan Park, all the way to just before Clark Street. I think there's a strip there that's the town. So we're going to do more investigation on that, but certainly with the splash pad and shelter. Miracle Field, the committee was very supportive of, of moving ahead to moving, reducing that from 45 to 25. Because it is in the, in the village area. It's not, doesn't involve the town in that particular spot on both sides of the road. So we can make that decision, but we're going to just check with the village engineer. And I think Chief was going to check with the town and see if we can extend it all the way through that whole section, that even that little spot within the town that, that we cross into, because it would be silly to have someone speed up for 300 feet or whatever it is to 45 and then it's slowed down to 25. It wouldn't make sense. But that is in consideration there. So we did, the committee talked about that. Activity wise, again, as Chief indicated, where officers are engaging the public as they did prior to COVID, albeit with, you know, masks and appropriate distancing as they can. And following the protocols they have in place. As far as the reports and stuff like that, not a lot of, of things to highlight there. We're in good shape on the budget overall. And future agenda items, I think we just talked about having a discussion about budget at our next meeting, and that will be on August 25th. Chief Labor, any, anything else you want to add or? If you're on, I think you're on. He's not on.
No, I think he's, I think he's up in Superior, John.
Okay. Matt, anything I, Matt, anything I, you think you should, that I should have added?
No, I just to clarify the use of force database. That's just, just another resource that we can utilize to make sure that all of our policies and procedures and everything that we do within the agency are up to, you know, current practices within the profession and then also within the guidelines of the state. So as you had alluded to, President Williams, our, our officers are utilizing correct force when force is needed. We haven't had any issues of excessive use of force or anything like that. So our officers are well-trained and, and doing a very good job.
All right. Thank you, Matt. You did much better than I did at that, so I appreciate it. Any questions related to that? Otherwise, I'll move on to all right, move on to reports from village officers. Larry or Rick? I don't know if I saw either of you on, but.
This is Larry. We lost Rick tonight because he had a trial for another community. I only had one thing tonight, and that is you all received, and this is sort of a cross between my update and correspondence coming later, but I'll just deal with it now. You all received some correspondence from property owner. Apparently, I think this gentleman is the principal at Cottage Grove School. And, and he's interested in building a pool behind his house, but there's a green space easement there. And, and that triggered, that request triggered some pretty significant review work by JJ as to, you know, sort of what the limits are, what these, that these can be used for. He also had a conversation with Andrew Hommer today, who developed a number of the plats that, where these easements are have been applied. I guess, you know, we're looking for a little bit more direction at this point. I mean, from my perspective, on the plat, it says green space easement. And to me, that's just something that generally you leave undeveloped or you maybe put some, you know, public trail through if the easement itself allows for that. In this case, that's not even that clear. But there's, there's clearly some interest in, in the public or the residents in exploring whether or not to expand for the village to allow more, maybe to, to turn back over to property owners, some of the rights the village holds as a, as a, that were dedicated through these plats. I guess I'm interested to know if people are interested. If, if you want me to do so, I can then do some more exploration here to see what authority the village has, if any, to, you know, reduce the size of this easement or allow certain types of encroachments into the easement. It's really up to you as to whether you want us to move forward. JJ, did you have anything to add on that?
Uh, no, I think you, you covered it all there. Just looking for direction like, like Larry said.
How much of the pool? Is it, we're talking about, they're looking at the pool in the entire easement or, or a portion of it or? And just tell me.
A portion, but, but also, yeah, a, a portion, but I think the, what we have to do in this case is think about the easement from a broader perspective, because regardless of what this request is, we have to always be consistent in the way that we apply these types of situations. So really, if you're interested in exploring whether to allow this to occur, I think then the, the next move is to just direct us to go beyond our little initial dig and actually, you know, basically have us generate a legal opinion as to the scope of the village's authority here, because it's unclear to me at this point who holds easement, if, if anyone in addition to the village, you know, whether Dane County might or we, we, we just don't have enough information to even know what you could allow. Or, you know, I mean, this is one of those situations where, you know, if you feel like you'd be really likely to say, no, this is a green space easement and the purpose of it is to not allow development in it, it's for everyone's just space. Then it may, it might not be worth looking into it and we can just tell residents that inquire that they're not allowed to place structures in that easement and and for those who have, there's a few that have slipped through the cracks. For those who have, you know, they'll have to really go and look at each one on a case-by-case basis to see if it's appropriate for there to be an enforcement action.
I, I guess I, I personally think if, if a citizen is paying property tax and yet they can't use that property, why are they, why is that part of their property? I would like to see more exploration in that and, and see what a property or can or can't do. It, it doesn't affect all that many property orders, I don't believe, but I can understand someone's frustration that I've got XYZ amount of property I'm paying X amount of dollars on and, well, I, I can't utilize this amount for anything other than looking at it, you know, that, just my opinion.
Well, they can be on it and there's, as far as I know, there isn't any restriction on them using it as yard and lawn. And no one else can be on it because it's not a, there isn't a public access that's allowed. So it's really just, you know, and, and nobody bought their property without this being in place. And there are quite a few, actually. There's three or four subdivisions that this runs through that there, there's a lot, quite dozens of properties that are affected by this. So I'm not arguing either way. I think that it's really a judgment call, policy decision by the board to decide, you know, do we really need 200, 200 feet, you know, along the, the creek or the drainage ditch? If you don't think that you maybe do, or if you want to allow secondary structures in that area, maybe secondary structures, as you said, only within the first 50 feet of that area closest to their, their, you know, the, the rest of their lot. Those are things we could certainly explore, but I just would recommend doing it as a global review of, of these easements as they pass through all of these subdivisions. That's the same general principle, because otherwise you're going to get some real inconsistency problems.
This is Heidi. I'm thinking a little bit about the multi-use path that goes through West Lawn, Fourth Edition. And I believe that path is on easements on property, so that's for public use, but the path is there and it exists. So I wouldn't want to set it up that this person could then challenge to have the path removed from their property because it's theirs and we're getting, we want to get rid of the easement. So is there is there a way, like if, if we haven't utilized this easement for public improvement or, I don't know.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, all the village roads are, most of the village roads are probably on easements too. You know, obviously the ones that have been deeded specifically to the village by development are owned by the village, but certainly, you know, most town roads in, in the state, most village, so there's all kinds of area that you own. Plus, road is a perfect example, what we're dealing with there with neighbors across the street owning half of the highway, even though now that's in the village. So there's all kinds of examples of easements that are, that are on private property. But to, to Troy's point, you shouldn't be paying the same in taxes for that property as you pay for property that doesn't have a public easement across it. So if somebody is, they should really go to open book and, and, and try to get that changed. That would be a mistake of assessment. You know, you can go either way here. I, I, I think that you know, we've looked at it, it would be a really nice place to put a ped bike type trail someday. It's not clear to me without more research whether we could do that. It's possible, it's a possibility that in exchange for these property owners conceding the point that there could be a ped bike trail that you'd release them from, you know, half the, or more of the width of their easement so they could have more flexibility. There's all kinds of possibilities here. But this easement, by my initial interpretation, is doing exactly what it was intended to do. Just staying open and undeveloped, which there's a lot of those easements around the county and a lot of those were pushed by Dane County Regional Planning and then since then, others, so.
Would those commissions have to approve the modification of this easement, like DNR or CARPSY or something like that?
That's exactly what we need to look into.
Larry, do you have a sense of how many hours it, it would take to come up with some sort of opinion draft memo for the board to react to?
The only wildcard there is to determine, as, as Heidi just said, who else has a, who has a, who else has a stake in this? And I might find that out in minutes and it might take a few hours in itself, but after that, it's just, you know, an hour, hour and a half of wrapping up what we've learned and maybe even just verbally presenting to the board. Really, all options are on the table. If, it's up to the village. You just have to decide if there's more cooks in the kitchen that have to weigh in. I mean, not decide, we have to determine if there's more entities that have to be addressed. I would guess the whole thing would be three to five hours.
I would, I would support gathering that additional information. Probably this question may come up from other residents in the future. It'd be helpful to have this kind of research done regardless of what choice we make.
I agree. And if we were looking at doing a bike path or pedestrian path through there, it would be good to know what other entities we're looking at too.
Others have thoughts?
It's not an action item, so I just was looking for a little bit of direction and I've gotten it, so.
Okay. Anything else, Larry?
Nothing else for me tonight.
All right.
Oh, I do have one last question for Larry. Do you expect that we might have a memo to look at next meeting?
I would doubt it. I think that the, the best way to save time is to put out some feelers and then slowly react to them as they come back in from various entities. So my guess is I won't be here back for everybody in time for that.
Is there any way we can communicate anything to the property owner or? Because I think they mentioned some time concerns.
I, I did in a phone call, just without knowing, I said, my gut tells me there's no way that a September timeline is going to be possible. It was unofficial, but I was pretty confident that I could give them that bad news.
And then in this case.
He still complimented you.
And I think in this particular case, we, we know that the DNR is certainly involved because of the, of the creek. So they have a, a say in this for sure as far as distance and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Good point, Heidi. All right. Moving then on to COVID-19 update. We'll go through the usual list of, of staff. So Matt, we'll start with you.
I'll be, I'll be quick. I don't have anything different since last time.
All right. Now our memories are all trying, we're all trying to think what you said last time. So.
No update, just nothing, nothing, business as usual.
All right. Chief Labor is enjoying some holiday time, so Lieutenant?
PD-wise, nothing really new. We're still status quo. Same thing that Dan says at every other meeting. You know, our guys are socially distancing when making traffic stops and making sure they're staying safe. So as under emergency government, one thing I want to make sure that I clarify or that we clarify when it comes to refunds for COVID-19 related expenditures, that they're not a guarantee. So when you're in your committees and you're talking about it and, you know, it's a, it's a possibility or the CARES Act comes up that, you know, we, we could possibly get refunded for this. Don't base, I guess my suggestion is don't base budgetary questions off of the possibility of getting refunded for it. If we do get refunded for it, I think that'll be great. But I think the decisions need to be made with the understanding that we may not get refunded for it. So just, just to clarify that and make sure that we're being physically responsible when it comes to the, the COVID-related expenditures. I have everything up to the end of July, so I will be submitting our first, I guess our first packet of receipts and for the refunds at the end of August through July 31st. And then I will do a second batch again prior to the November 1st deadline for this first first wave of hopeful reimbursement. So any questions regarding that? I know I had a question that came up earlier regarding which order we fall under when it comes to the restrictiveness, if the state order is more restrictive than the county order or vice versa. And the way that, that's done is the more restrictive order is the one that we follow. So as of right now, Dane County's order is more restrictive than what the state order is. So we are still following the Dane County mandates when it comes to COVID-19. If that changes or a part of that changes and let's say Dane County loosens up on a certain parameter that they're, they're watching, but the state is then still more strict, then we have to follow the state's order when it comes to that and stay with the more strict order. Does that make any sense or is that as clear as mud?
Makes sense to me.
All right. Trust me, it's the amount of emails and phone calls that I sit in on, it's sometimes at the end of the day, I don't even know if I can understand myself when, when I'm talking COVID-19 related stuff, so. Any clarification anyone needs from me? All right. That's all I got. Thanks, John.
Sure. Thanks, Matt. Moving on then, JJ.
No report. Still looking good.
All right. Wonderful. Sean, you had spoken earlier about some cool things about our drive-in movie thing. Anything else to add from Parks?
We're just slowly doing a little bit more programming. We started tennis lessons today. Our cheer and tumbling program is moving forward with a lot of social distancing and PPE precautions. But yeah, we're kind of slowly getting back into things. Other than that, we're good.
All right. Thank you, Sean. All right. Any other questions for any of those folks in the board? Alright, any other questions for any of those folks in the board? Alright, then moving on to communication, mostly miscellaneous business, uh consider approval of vouchers. Any questions on those or comments or or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you, Troy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh any uh further questions or discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Uh, under eleven B correspondence, uh Larry indicated the first one I had on the list was the owner looking to put a pool in with the easement um consideration, and I think so we've covered that and and all the board members should have received that that the that email. And uh staff has been involved in that considerably, so uh we'll continue uh as Larry now has direction to kind of dig into that further overall, and then certainly that will help us to decide uh this particular situation. And then the other uh bulk of correspondence is uh related to particularly a flurry today uh regarding the Dolphins Swim Academy. Um, hopefully, everyone had a chance to at least look at a few of those. All the ones that I saw, the several I saw, were all in favor. Um, there were a few that uh um even went beyond the Dolphin Academy, um but uh certainly there's favorability over a number of of, you know, seven to ten or so or more um people, and those all have been forwarded to Lisa to to include for the record. Um, and again, they were all very similar as far as their positive support of um the Dolphins uh Academy. So um does anybody else have any correspondence they want to share or received?
Uh, this is Heidi. I had a couple emails about some interest um and support for uh and questions about what the Sustainability Committee is doing, so um I I thought it was great to hear from some community members on that. And then I think we all got a message from Larry Engage as a follow-up um from last meeting on diversity, equity, inclusion. So um, of course, we'll uh start at the committee on that, so they can start to come up with some action items. And I also wanted to point out the current issue of the municipality magazine I took out of my mailbox today, which is about racial equity, so um it had some good articles in it. Interested in reading that. You should have it in your mailbox too.
Alright, thanks, Heidi. Anyone else? Alright, then uh next item is oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go read over one. It's right in front of me. So the next item, sub item, is the resident outreach regarding uh property assessments. This is also something uh board members have heard uh from their neighbors, uh folks they don't know, well, and they're getting to know. Um, we're, and staff is certainly has fielded a bunch of these. We're trying to uh focus everybody back to the appraiser to get the same consistent information. We've also posted information out on on our website and Facebook as well. Um, Matt, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, that pretty much covered it, John Banks. Um there there may have been one or two email correspondence from residents that you've received. Uh certainly a lot, there's a lot more activity on social media, which we, you know, try to monitor a little bit, but we don't see all of it. And then a lot of calls and people stopping in at Village Hall, which which makes sense when um you know, when people uh you know, get a notice for increased assessment, that's certainly something that catches people's eye, but it's it's also important to help um educate and explain the context involved with that. So in in coordination with the assessors, the um informational flyer that's in here. So so there, I'll take a step back. There was initially some information that that went out that included some frequently asked questions and explanation of of what the revaluation was, but now since that time has passed and this, and the revaluation is complete, um and we know the outcome of that, it makes sense to explain again, getting into the context and then the process for how one would go about talking with the assessor and potentially challenging the um the assessment both informally and formally. So that's what's that's what's included here, really just for your information, to see what's what's out there and um but more importantly is like John was saying, the consistent messaging, which is to really have people contact the assessor and make sure everyone's getting consistent information.
Is the plan to mail this letter out to all residents, to post it on Facebook? What's the plan for it?
Good question. It it's on Facebook, it's available at Village Hall hard copy, and it's it's on the website.
The one, the one where from the, on the agenda that's dated July thirty first?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, this is Heidi. I directed a couple of my neighbors to that information sheet because they came to me with some questions. And they found it very helpful and appreciated um the extra information. So thank you to staff members that prepared that um extra information and steps um to help guide people. So thank you.
I would share the same sentiment. I had a few friends that asked me and redirected them to it and you know, it was well received by them in terms of what they saw. So thanks for putting that together.
You bet.
Alright, um if there's no other discussion regarding that item, we'll move on to upcoming community events. We already talked about the drive-in video at Fireman's on the sixteenth. Um, and we had the, the riot is coming up in September, so that's a little bit further out. Other community event items that people want to highlight, board members want to highlight, or staff?
Add um to remind everybody the election next Tuesday, August eleventh.
That is correct. Uh, the community will see a tent pop up again. So um to keep everybody uh safe and socially distanced. And I know that Lisa's already mentioned uh in a couple meetings that the uh absentee requests uh were way, were way up. Um, so I think a lot of, a lot of community members have already kind of made their decision and sent that in, so um, that's also worth noting. Uh, anybody else have any other events they want to highlight?
I believe, John, not to interrupt, but um Stuff the Bus is coming up.
Oh.
Yep, yep, that is uh, that is the Saturday, the eighth, from eight till three. Uh, we will have a bus set up at uh Pigly Wiggly in Cottage Grove for donations of either school supplies or monetary funds. The school actually prefers monetary funds over the school supplies. And uh for residents that may not be near Pigly Wiggly, we also had one uh set up at um the Manona Pick-a-Pipe, Pick and Save, so.
Alright. Um, and I should have remembered that. Thank you, Matt, because uh I'm working that in the afternoon on the eighth, so and I helped with the fire together, so shame on me for that. Any other uh community events? People can remind me that I've forgotten.
The groundbreaking for Comfort Suites is August twelfth.
Yes.
However, um they're handling mostly, I believe, by invite only, so it's more so just that it's going to happen and, you know, they're just trying to keep the the crowd down just during these times, keep distancing. But that's planned for the morning of the twelfth.
Yep. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Any others? Alright. Uh, future agenda items. We touched on a few earlier. We'll have a lot of committee members, a committee meeting updates. Um, more on the priorities and um madam, I forget anything, anything major?
Not at the top of my head.
Okay. Alright, um and then we'll move on to um item twelve, and item twelve is a closed session. Um, and this is a closed session related to negotiations with development incentive and land sale uh in tid number five. I'd like the motion that the Village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant on Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses E, delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, uh the vesting of public funds, or the conducting of other specific public business where wherever competitive or bargaining reasons uh require a closed session. So we'll do a roll call.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's the second. Thank you, Troy. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote on this, and Lisa will.
Brett Cliff?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Lindberg? Murphy?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vander Veldy?
Aye.
Alright, um we will now move on to closed session, so we'll